Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. This is a meeting of the Town and Rulton Zoning Board of Appeals. It's 6 o'clock. We're going to start the meeting now. My name is Chris Senical. I'm the vice chair. I'll be moderating the meeting tonight. Rick Sarette is the chairman, but he could not make it tonight. He's on Zoom, so he'll be with us via the Zoom. Paul Crane, attorney at Wells. Paul Paulson, an attorney, Jacob Morris, and Tamika Murphy, who keeps this whole thing going. She's the rock behind the... They're just a good-looking guys here. So anyways, the first thing on the agenda is the meeting minutes from April 27th. Do you guys want to just go over that after this? We'll stop this here?
I wasn't there for that, so...
I had no issues with it.
All right, so well, the only issue I had was, Tamika, on the meeting minutes, Attorney Sousa allowed... I believe there was a discussion at the very end of the meeting about allowing an extension, and I think he was going to give you a signature for that.
So at the prior hearing, we had extended that to July.
So we're good?
So we didn't need to do it back then.
Okay, perfect. Then I'm all set as it was, then.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Meeting minutes done. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the public hearing for application for special permit for Lot 6, River Road. Are you folks the applicants here for that? Okay, welcome. I looked over this. The town planner, Dave George, is here. Just to make a note, we've received some inter-office memos regarding this. We've got the... Is this from the... David McCray, the building inspector and/zoning officer, reviewed the commercial special permit application for Lot 6, River Road, and I would be in favor of the proposed business. He has no issues with this, so he was fine with it. The board of health at this time wrote a memo saying there is no indication of potable water or a septic system on the property at this time, so I see you guys have one on your plan, so we can discuss that. Again, it looks like the septic is on the town of Hubbardston, so we'll discuss that. And there was a memo from the planning board regarding the special permit. The applicant who submitted one note form of use, after his review, the planning board indicated that it was in support of the special permit being granted. And also, the town planner will attend the meeting, Dave George. You're here. Dave, do you have anything too that you'd like to bring up at this time, please?
At this point, I would just say that planning staff have been working with this applicant on this various matter since the end of last year. So we're just here in case the board has any questions that you'd like to see if we can answer. Although I think the applicant has a pretty successful application. It's very complete. So I'll leave it to those folks to do most of the presentation.
All right, so I guess... Do you guys have any quick comments about this? Or do you want the applicant to hear them put their case forward? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to present this tonight. Why don't you talk about the business a little bit?
So I'm Parker. It's Parker's Packards is the business. And if you're not familiar, Packard was a luxury automobile made in Detroit up until 1956. And we've successfully, for 20 years now, had a business restoring and maintaining Packard automobiles for collectors all along the East Coast here. And so what we do primarily is really just keep these cars on the road. We don't do any paint and body. I don't want to be involved in that, never have been involved in that. So what we do is strictly on the mechanical side, making sure they start, stop, run, drive, do everything that they intended to do when they were new, and make sure that our customers are satisfied and can take the cars on tours and parades and that sort of thing. And we've been doing that, like I said. Next month will be 20 years we've been doing that. And we're just looking to move our building into the town where we live.
Where are you presently doing that?
We're currently in Holden. We've been in Holden 11 years. And then the prior nine years before that, we were in Mansfield and then Stoughton. So we've been slowly moving closer to home.
Moving back to the center of the state. Finally there.
So, you know, what we... What we, like I said, what we mainly do with the Packard automobiles is just maintenance work. So we're doing tune-ups, brake checks, you know, safety items for state inspections if the state that they live in requires such, you know, headlights, brake lights, all that sort of thing. That's really what we do with the vast majority of the work that we do with the Packard automobiles. And worth of noting is none of the work that we do is in the same vein as, say, a dealership or a repair shop, which would, you know, kind of churn them out daily. Most cars come into our shop, they're with us for probably a minimum of four to five months. So when they come in, they're into the long haul. It's just mainly because of obtaining parts to fix. Nothing either has to be made or we have to locate it somewhere in the country and have something shipped in to keep these cars on the road. So that's just worth noting. And then we have a secondary business that restores water pumps and fuel pumps for antique cars. And that would be housed within... It has been housed within the building we are currently in as a subcomponent. It takes up about 500, 600 square feet of floor space, but it is considered a separate entity. So that's the other thing that we'd be moving as well.
All right. Anything else? Is that pretty much the...
That's the summary.
And I think to note, we've been in Holden for 11 years, and I don't know if you guys know where Holden Storage is, but it's in the center of a residential area. We've never had one complaint.
Where are the storage facilities at?
Yes.
Off of Waukesha.
Yeah, we're in one of the larger buildings around back. And we've never had a complaint about noise or anything else from any of the surrounding neighbors.
One thing actually I should make a note of as well is unlike most automotive shops, I cannot leave vehicles outside. They're too valuable. So there's never an indication, especially if you drive by where we are currently, that you would know what's inside the four walls. So just as a note that... Because there's plenty of repair shops around town, and they always have a parking lot full of cars. I can't do that. They're just too valuable. So just worth of noting that you won't see anything unless the doors are open.
It's not going to look like a used dealership.
All right. Any questions for the applicant?
It's going to look like it looks like now, right?
Essentially.
It's going to be landscaped and, you know, gussied up.
Cleaned up a little bit, yeah.
The front of that's paved right now, correct?
No.
No.
It's crushed down.
It's crushed down. We want to do pavement in front of the garage doors.
If I remember, is that sloped up like?
Yes.
Like it's just a pretty steep... Not so much a steep grade, but it's...
It's a grade. It's a grade, yeah.
So other than improving the look a little bit, the building's not going to change?
No. It's going to... Because the outward appearance of the building is metal, so it's in great shape. The roof is in great shape, the walls are in great shape. So, you know, the outside, you know, some landscaping, a little bit of paving in front of the doors to, you know, make that easier for that grade and whatnot. But other than that, no.
Do you have any plans for in back there, there's that sort of...
The embankment?
Yeah, the embankment.
We're going to clean it because there is some overgrowth, and the roots have started to shift some of the rocks on the hill. So we're going to have to clean and tidy that up a little bit, but nothing...
Because I've always been by and wonder why it hasn't just come right down.
It's a lot of...
There's a lot of old growth holding up there.
A lot of old growth, and there's a lot of rock there.
Yeah.
And I think that's... It's not just loose dirt.
Yeah, I've never actually seen it change.
And there is a retaining wall at the bottom behind the building. Yeah.
You can't see that.
No, you can't. I should get up and go on back, but yeah.
And do you guys... Do you do any fabrication on site? Even for the pumps or anything? You don't make parts?
We use a... We have a bridge port and a lathe. So if we have to make, say, like an impeller shaft, a 5/8 impeller shaft, we'll chuck that up on the lathe, but that's...
Small little metal pipe.
A small diameter water pump shaft. Or, you know, if we're... Stuff you would do in your home garage, reaming a wheel cylinder, you know, with a hone, you know, but that's stuff you do with a drill.
CNC machines and so...
Oh, no, 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 no. Everything is all...
No dyno machine or anything like that?
No. We're dealing with 90 and 100 horsepower. Antique straight eight.
The great straight eight. Okay. So the issue here is it's in a residential zone. It's been used as a commercial business already, previously, correct?
Correct.
So I don't know if I'm confused with another property. Did the zoning change here on this or something? Does anybody know the backstory on this property? Is the original owner here or anything like that? Excuse me, are you the owner?
I live next door, 116 River Road, Jeff Bartek, and I purchased that land in 2010. And I actually owned that building up until October of 2011.
Was it... Okay. So you bought in 2010 off from who?
From Mark Flynn. But I did not buy the building, but Mark Flynn did not finalize the registry of deeds, the property line, and my property went through the building. So in order for him, we actually had a stipulation where no commercial could go on during that if we sold the property. So we sold him the property. Nothing he could do with it. Sold it to him, and it's been sitting there for storage for years. It's been never, never commercial since I've been there for 12 years.
Did that fence guy own the thing?
He's right there.
Right there.
We've been using it up until they were interested in buying it.
Okay. So you've been operating your business out of that?
No. No, you haven't. Don't lie. You didn't ever roll with that, ever?
Well, that's because we stand there and we leave for the jobs.
All right, all right, hey. All right, listen. I was hoping this was going to be a pretty easy thing, but I'm just going to tell you guys all right now. None of that going on, all right? Just one guy's going to talk at a time. Everybody will get a chance to say something, but we're not going to have a whole, you know, this little Donnybrook going on over here, a little side show, all right? So let's keep it straight up now. We're not going to open the meeting to the public right now. So just hold on. I was just trying to see. So just, does anybody on this board know the story of this? Dave, do you know by any chance the history of the zoning on this?
Yeah. The applicant has some information about that in her packet. From what I understand, in 2008, you'll see in the packet that there's a zoning map.
Yep.
Then in 2008, there was a change from light industrial office to residential. I did check with the town clerk to see if she had any background on why it was changed. The minutes don't really reflect the rationale for the change of zoning at that time. I do believe that at that time, in 2008, the TC, the building center district's coming into play for the first time.
Yep.
So I'm not really...
They did like a townwide... I remember they did like a townwide kind of shuffle, so to speak.
So it was a commercial zone up to 2008, and then it became a residential zone at that time.
So it had been a commercial zone, Dave?
Yes, light industrial office.
Light industrial office?
For before 2008.
And is the property owner... And that was in 2008. Did anybody in this room right now own that property in 2008?
No, nobody.
And when was that garage originally built, in 2008?
2007.
Yeah, that's prepared by the applicant.
I remember when this went to auction, I remember looking at the thing. That's like a...
Morton.
Morton building, right? Yeah, like on the... Just wooden post, right?
Joe Jermaine bought it from the auction.
From the auction, yeah. All right. So Dave, do you know... So you don't know why this changed back to R... Is it 60, correct?
R60, yep.
There's no reason or record why that happened?
As I mentioned, you know, we did try to get some background for the zoning change. The town clerk doesn't have that information. So it's not clear why that occurred. I suppose if we looked at the meeting minutes, probably the planning board by less subcommittee at the time would have had to review the change. I mean, maybe they have some background on it. But the fact, I mean, but it was commercial up until 2008.
Okay.
And then after that, it becomes residential.
All right.
Precision owns it now? And what's the nature of your business, sir?
Fence installation. We use that for storage there. All right.
So if you own this, some of these...
Some of these...
I don't understand the drawing. Very patrally when they redid it.
You know, I know way back at some point, I don't recall when, I think it was prior to 2008, a lot of guys were running businesses out of their homes. And when they started doing some industrial zoning things, if you were in the know, you've got your home, basically. You know, you look at like the zoning map on Route 122. Like people just... Their home with like three, five acres is industrial. The guy right next to them is residential. I mean, there's no reason, there was no... It's not the whole stretch of 56 or 122. It's just, yeah, my business was here when they went to go add, you know, that zoning to it, and they just got it put in. But it was not like a master plan. There was no... There wasn't a whole lot of forward thinking, I don't think. This is interesting.
So you've been running the business there for 10 years?
You've been there for 10 years, right?
I've owned it for 10 years, yeah.
You own the property?
I do.
And you're selling it to them, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Were you in there before the change to residential?
No, I must have been in there in '11, so it must have been just after.
2008, and he came in around '11 or '12, so... And what was it before, before you?
It was Flynn excavating before me.
Flynn excavating? Okay. He was the one originally built it?
You don't have a lot of people... There is a law... I wish I had my phone. All day. Those are contiguous uses. If the zoning changes and the use continues on as commercial use, then you're allowed to continue going as long as it's contiguous use. It's not necessarily ownership that changes its use, you know, the business.
Yeah, the use, yeah.
The use has not changed. Now, if the use stops being used commercially at any point in time, the zoning goes away. That grand...
That privilege goes away, so...
It's like the grandfathering? Yeah. That property, as long as it's been in contiguous use since the zoning was changed, you can't change it on somebody while they, you know...
You don't have a lot of traffic in your business, in and out? You don't have a lot of customers?
We leave and go to job sites.
I mean...
Us?
Yes.
No.
We have no traffic.
It's just the employees and then FedEx, UPS, you know, the normal.
Yeah.
Like I said, we're not a high-volume...
Yeah, it does seem like it.
We still need a customer a month.
Yeah, maybe.
You want to see a record of these again, maybe?
Yeah, good point, I thank you. Rick, do you have anything at this time? You'd like to comment or any questions you have?
Well, I'm looking at this. I'm trying to see if the use fits into any of the allowable uses. Not really.
I thought it looked, Rick, it said it allowed the use for car show runs and stuff.
And I'm trying to look at the grandfathering aspect of it. You know...
It's my opinion, the bylaws, we've been through this before, that, you know, Grant, if the zoning changed and you were there before, you know, it was allowed. I thought that's what was in the bylaws, and I thought that's the way we've done things.
I don't know.
But Rick, are you talking about when you're coming in for a special permit? Is that what you're talking about? It's got to still fall within an allowable use? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's the way... That's the way the bylaw is written. You know, it's just unfortunate that you have an area that was used, you know, for industrial, and now it's R60. So it really kind of ties our hands. I mean, I think that probably a majority of the board right now would like to find a way to allow this to these people. I'm taking a look at the bylaw right now. See if...
Do you know what law that is, Paul? GL? Do you guys... Do you guys know anything about that?
What bylaw are you looking at, Rick?
Oh, I'm looking at Section 8, just residential.
This is allowed by special permit in a light industrial district, which is what this was.
Yeah.
Any automobile body shop for repair, maintenance, and painting. That's what it was originally in 2007, 2008.
It was construction.
No, I mean, that's what was allowed there, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's allowed in that... So it was construction, so it was being used warehouse and storage facilities. That's its allowed, allowable use. So it's being used as this stuff. It's been used within what the bylaws said can be continuously since it was prior to the zoning changes.
Well, I think the point of the petitioner's point is, yeah, it's been used for certain commercial uses in a continuous fashion such that the current commercial use, if it's a commercial use, you know, is allowable because it's a non-conforming use. Now, they want to, in so many words, continue a non-conforming use, but it's a different use. It's still commercial. So the question is, you know, they need a special permit because they're changing the use, okay? I mean, that's what you're talking about.
I really don't see it as a change in use because, I mean...
You define change use as like type of business or just business?
Well, I mean, that's... I'm just sort of looking at what you guys presented. I think, you know... I don't know if this is right. I'm just interpreting what we're talking about here. You're saying because the existing use is, you know, a fence company, you're not another fence company, and maybe you're saying it's... The nature of it is different enough that you, you know, you want a special permit in order to do this different use now. I mean, that's what I understand. And to me, it turns on whether the... You know, there's a non-conforming use that you can piggyback on to a certain words. I mean, you know, and... You know, I mean, we can hear from everybody else. I mean, you know, there could be factual issues about was there a continuous, you know, use that makes it non-conforming right here now? I don't know. I mean, we'll probably have to hear about that, but...
Yeah, Chris, like when you're ready, I just want to...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Rick.
...section. Okay, so I'm looking at Section 13, Subsection B. This is pre-existing non-conforming structures and uses. It looked... I'd just like for everyone to take a look at that, if you could. Would you like to read it?
Page 29. It's Section 13?
Yeah, yeah, it's page 29.
Non-conforming uses and structures? And he's talking about letter B, subset B? It's described in MGL 40A6, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, or changed only by special permit from the Board of Appeals. Any such change, extension, or alteration shall require a finding by said board that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use of structure. For the purpose of this bylaw, any extension, alteration, or change shall not apply to work that does not increase the amount of living usable space in the structure or does not increase the footprint or size of the structures."
I mean, where it was previously used as industrial might be able to use this section, I don't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair?
If he is changing it, you know, he's got to build it out. You've got to rework... He's got to rework the thing.
He's not changing the footprint.
Not changing the footprint, no.
Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
So I'm not sure if the application reflects it, but the conversations that the planning and building staff had with the applicant was that the section to apply for is 13B because of the nonconformities involved, and that the request of the applicant was to provide a timeline, establish the non-conforming use. Then once they've done that, then they would indicate that what they would like to do is a slightly different commercial use than what was previously there, and that they would then have to show how it's not detrimental compared to the most recent prior use. So 13B is what the advice was.
Yeah. I agree with 13B, though.
I knew we had something in there.
Yeah, I agree with 13B.
The applicant has the basic language is on page two in the application.
And all we need to do is make a finding by the board that's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure.
And then issue the special permit after that finding.
Yeah. I mean, the next part says if it hasn't been used... It loses it if it's been vacant for two years. Well, it has not, but it's been in continuous use this entire time.
Okay.
Well...
One second, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I mean, arguably, it's been a pretty continuous use. You know, it's pretty continuous non-conforming use. From what I've heard, I can't really say that we've had a significant amount of time where the use has been discontinued or abandoned. If you look at the history, it's always been that... It's been like, pretty much light industrial. But I don't know if anybody wants to challenge me on whether it was abandoned.
I would think when you get the public comment, we can...
We're going to get the public comment, guys.[1527.94] We're going to get the public comment, guys. We'll just let the board talk right now. We'll, we'll open up the public comment after. We've gone through everything. Be patient, please. Just make your little notes and get ready to go. We'll get you. Um, Jake, you had something?
Nope.
Paul, you got anything?
No, I'm good. And the only answer is it looks like, I mean, there's, it's allowable to do, provided, you know, you can't go forward with this. I don't see anything that slams the door shut on it right now.
Yeah, no. Are you?
Yeah, I think we should hear, I think there's some contrary views about whether in fact the use has been continuous.
Yeah. All right, man, you had your, your hand up first way before. So, um, listen, excuse, one second. Will you guys speak, okay? Please state your name, full name, first and last, and your address for Tamika, please, so she can make sure she gets to record that, okay? So, go ahead, man, please.
I wanted to say something other than what's going on over here.
Sure, go ahead.
In the nineteen forties, Harvey Taylor owned the land that all of us live on. And in the early seventies, he sold that land, I think in nine.
Excuse me, where do you live? What was your?
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy Lee Crompton. I live at one eleven River Road, Rutland, Massachusetts.
And just where is, relation is that to this property?
I'm on the opposite side of the street.
Okay.
And they're over there.
All right.
So, they're past.
Okay, that's what she gives you for a month. You go ahead. Yep?
So, Harvey Taylor sold up a lot. We built our house along with the other people that did. And we've lived there, and to my knowledge, it's been industrial zoned. And I've always said we should get that changed because over the years, we have more than twenty-five or thirty houses now on River Road, where back then there was Harvey Taylor's, which is the campground. There was Locke's, which is the blue house further back away from them. And then there was McCabe's house. So, there were three houses on River Road once. Now, I think there's thirty or thirty-one. So, I don't think it should be industrial. It should be residential.
It is residential.
Well, and that's what you were saying, right?
Well, it was industrial at one time, and in two thousand eight, which after this building was built, but after this building was built.
Right, exactly.
It got changed, back to residential. So, right now, it's technically residential.
Mrs. Craig lived in Hubbardston, and Mark Flynn bought Latino's land, which is where Bartek lived, and two or three lots in Hubbardston. And he was going, he's the one that did all that work up on the hill. He was going to build a house up there. Well, they became divorced. He sold the land, and I guess at some point they, that was done.
Yeah.
So, I think, just for me, that looking at that place, that building, that garage, whatever you want to call it, it's not frequented, but it isn't eyesore. And I would like to see somebody make it look presentable in the neighborhood because, like I said, it's all residential now. There's all houses. You've got Jimmy Walcott down by the campground. You've got the campground, and I, and there's, there's nobody else that owns a home business like you mentioned before. Those have all gone except for Jimmy and, um, the one that I just can't remember their names. So, I would like to see it made into a pleasant-looking place. Do I want there to be nine or ten or twelve trucks or cars or whatever? No, I don't want that because when Mrs. Mc, uh, Mrs. Craig died, she sold her land to, um, Mark Johnson. And Mark Johnson put in his, um, what's that business where you have?
Concrete.
Yes, concrete forms and such. And he had to get a cease and desist given to him because Hubbardston's land is also residential there. So, we've had that going on. And that kind of puts in me, I can't say about the other people, the fear that, oh, my God, what is going to happen next? You know, I moved to the country in nineteen seventy-two because I wanted to live in the country where it was quiet and nice. We have deer and moose, and we have bears, and we have all kinds of things going on. And after Mrs. Craig's house, all I could hear on Saturday and Sunday were one of those things called little racing things that you drive all up and down. And that was horrible, just horrible.
Okay.
So, I would like to just see the land be used in a nice way. That's all.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ask a question, ever?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Um, do you have any knowledge of the property since, um, two thousand and eight that it has not been used, that it was in, not used at all?
I saw once a young man who lives in the center of Rutland was going to buy that on his place.
Okay, but that's not, but do you know that, do you have any knowledge of the use, that it was not being used and was vacated in the past fifteen years?
It hasn't been used. They might be storing things in there.
Okay, but you have no knowledge that it's been abandoned?
But there's no regular coming and going Monday through Friday.
But you have no knowledge of it being abandoned?
None, none.
Okay, thank you.
None.
All right, um, uh, yeah, go ahead. So, state your name and this, sure.
Paul Dearden, one oh eight River. I also, everything Randy said, I agree with. It's residential. Let's keep it residential. Um, Flynn created an awful eyesore there. I have a couple of questions. If the planning board's been working with Mr. Roff since the beginning of the year, how come we weren't involved, the people that live on this street, number one? Number two, Mr. Roff owns Six Acres in town. How come he doesn't build it on his property, run his business on his property?
Um, well, to your first question, um, people, when they're, were looking to purchase property, sir, they very often, um, purchase property contingent of certain permits, okay? And a permit is never known if you're going to get it until you get it. And a lot, oftentimes, the sale doesn't go through if they don't get their permits needed to run a business or whatever they, whatever they're choosing to do with that property. And in that process, there's a lot of informal meetings that are met with, um, towns. A lot of towns like Rutland, a lot of other towns have what's called, um, the, the, the building inspectors are there. Like, like I know in the, for instance, I own property in town of Oxford. You go down to town of Oxford like once a month, and the fire department, the building inspectors are there. And if you have an idea of what you want to do on a property, it's an informal meeting. You talk with them. They kind of give you some guidelines and things like that, okay? So, it's not uncommon for a town to, to speak with people and kind of give them some guidance, okay? That's not a public hearing. The public hearing is right here and now, and you're here. So, you're getting your chance to, to speak up and say nothing's given. The, the planning, you know, Dave George is the town planner, and his job is to guide people. They go to him for information on how to help their business and, and, and find a place in Rutland to do something like that. If someone wants to start a business here in town, he's the guy you go to, and he sets them up. So, they've done everything correctly. There's nothing, you know, behind your back. I don't want you to think anything like that. Um, that's all perfectly legal and normal and happens every day, okay? Just, just so you know. That's just once you're thinking everything else like that.
I'd like to know where the Fence Man's business is located now.
Okay, well, um, that's, you can't, you, all questions have to go through the chair.
Okay, you can ask them.
Well, I, I'm not sure that's a relevant question right now.
Well, it's very relevant because I want to know when he moved it. There's your, because I haven't seen any action there in years. I go up and down that street twice a day, walking the dog.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you the same question, if I may, Chris.
Yeah, let's just calm down, everybody. All right, hang on a second, all right? Do you have anything else to say or ask, sir?
Not at this moment.
All right, thank you. Uh, sir, in the back, do you have a question?
Chris, I'd like to ask him.
Yeah, go ahead.
Want to ask the same question. Do you have any knowledge of the building being abandoned? Definitely not, it, it's definitely been not in use, that you can actually say that the building was not?
You have trees growing out of the gutters.
Hey, hey, no, please, sir. It's not your turn yet.
I haven't seen any activity there, and I honestly don't know, but it's a long time.
Okay, but you don't have, you, okay, all right.
More than a year.
Yep. If it's.
Hold on, man, hold on, man.
She can go, she can go.
You're all set.
Absolutely, let her go.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Lita Dearden, also live in one oh eight River Road, and we, my, uh, our children grew up there, so always peaceful. And I stay home mom for a while. So, until freeing to build a garage, they, they think they're going to use it until they move out and divorce, and I don't know what happened. But, and sometimes I will see they are doing business, move some furniture, but when it's a snow day, no plowing. When the school bus always use that to turn around to different, uh, from Rutland to go back to the River Road. So, there is like a, school bus always stop there and make a turn. So, that's why I feel like nobody's there. I know it's business, that's a sign there, but it pretty much just like storage, just like what they say. And this winter, probably a couple feet of snow and, until natural.
All right, a, all right, one second. Sorry, the gentleman in the back, you'll be next, okay? Go ahead, sir, state your name.
Jeff Bartek, one sixteen River Road. So, again, my wife and I purchased one sixteen River Road in two thousand and ten, okay?
Um, real quick, just one question. Where is that in relation to this property?
Right next door. I'm in the house right next to that garage.
Just before it, going towards Hubbardston?
Just before, that, only house next to it.
Okay.
Um, so, when we purchased it in two thousand and ten, we asked about the building. The building Mark Flynn lost to the bank, okay? So, the bank owned it. Joe Germain bought it. I have a letter here from my lawyer back from two thousand and eleven stating that he wants to buy the property from us, okay? So, if that property has been used and vacant, then how is it that I owned it and they were operating out of there? But he couldn't, okay? Because no one used the building. Again, there's shit growing, excuse, excuse my language. There's trees and shrubs growing out of the gutters, okay? So, when we went to sell them the land, we had it put that no commercial, nothing could go on over in that garage if we sold that land. And that's when we sold it, in two thousand and ele, October two thousand and eleven. He bought it in two thousand and twelve. So, there's four years of vacancy of that building doing nothing. And since he's owned it, nothing, nothing out of there. I'm telling you. We didn't buy that house to live next to commercial. We moved in that house because we knew nothing was going to happen with that garage. And that's what we were told.
Could you, could you repeat the dates again? You purchased that?
Two thousand and ten, May two thousand and ten.
From who?
From Mark Flynn.
All right, so May two thousand and ten.
The bank, the bank took it from Mark Flynn.
The, the garage.
Yeah.
Okay, we bought the house, not the garage.
Oh, now, did you own the garage?
Yes, so here's the thing.
When did you purchase the garage?
So, listen, when, when Mark Flynn divided the land, he did not finalize it with the registry of deeds, okay? So, my property line goes through five-eighths of that building. In order for Joe Germain to buy that land and do anything, he either had to move the building off my property or buy a parcel of land to continue to have the building there. Stipulations for us to sell him the land to keep the building there is that it would be non-commercial. Signed it, bought, and we sold him the land and parcel in two thousand and eleven. October is when it was finalized. I can get you the exact date and paperwork if you'd like it.
All right, let me.
Is that, is there a recorded document with the registry?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I have it all. I have a letter in the air from the lawyer stating.
Is the recorded, does a recorded document have language saying that it can't be a commercial use?
Um, ninety-nine point nine percent positive.
We don't have that with you right now.
Oh, I have a letter stating that.
Well, it's got to be recorded in the record.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
All right, well, it's a, in two thousand and eleven, when you sold the build, your part, your ownership in the building.
Yeah.
Who'd you sell it to?
To Joe Germain.
And what did he use it for at that point?
Nothing. He couldn't do anything with it because he couldn't do non-commercial.
What year?
He owned an oil company and a dumpster company.
Why did he buy it?
Why did he buy it?
Okay. And what year, and what year did Joe Germain sell that, do you know? Or when did Joe Germain sell it?
Sold it to him because he couldn't do anything with it.
In two thousand and twelve.
When in two thousand and twelve? What year did you per, what, what month did you purchase it?
I don't remember.
That's a key element here.
Page six on our packet.
We need to know.
It's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
This is a two-year, it's a two-year revocation. The fence people bought it in May, less than a two-year revocation. We'll see here. In the event the non-conforming has been discontinued, in the event that a non-conforming use or structure has been discontinued, so if they're not using it at all.
Yeah, it's four years at least, gentlemen.
Well, now, we're actually down to, just to, an ownership.
Is it use or ownership?
We go to part C. Shall lose its ownership.
What does discontinued mean?
Non-conforming use of the structure, non-conforming use of the structure. So, if they stopped using it.
No, I know. But what, what does discontinued mean?
All right, you put up a business, you, you build a building. This is my interpretation of it. You build a, they, it's permitted properly. You build a, um, storage facility there. You're parking your commercial trucks in it. You move everything out of it. You don't use it. You're not using that building for anything for two years. Then, the use of it's been discontinued under commercial, right? But we have a sale date of twenty-ten, when it stopped, May twenty-ten. And we have another purchase in twenty-twelve, but we don't know the month.
I can look it up.
Oh, you can, yeah.
Can I, I don't know who, uh, maybe I'll ask the applicants first, and then maybe I'll ask them. Who's J K, J K G, and what, what, what was their relationship? You know, they bought it at auction. Who's J K G?
That's Joey Germain.
That's Joey Germain.
Yeah. And if I may, the non, it talks about non-conforming structures ten years or older. So, my understanding would, it would have been from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-two, we would have to show non-conforming continuous use. Is that correct?
No. I think what we're talking about now is, was there a break in the commercial use?
Now, with that, what you're referring to is, what she's referring to is that if it's been, if a permit was granted, it's used for ten years continuously.
Yeah.
Nobody can bring up anything and say, you can't do this anymore, no cease and desist and stuff.
Okay, gotcha.
We just went through this with the reason one. Um, so that would be ten years, you're kind of locked in.
Gotcha.
What we're looking at here is a two-year.
And our understanding.
Well, you know, that's a good point because that brings up non-conforming structures ten years or older. Doesn't talk about uses. Read that section A of thirteen.
Yeah.
All right, and, and Jake, did you guys see that thirteen A section?
Hmm.
So, thirteen A, non-conforming structures ten years or older, in accordance with MGL C forty-eight seven, a structure which has not been in compliance with this chapter or with the conditions set forth in any special permit or variance affecting the structure for a period of ten years or more from the commitments, from the commencement of the violation, may not be the subject of any enforcement action by the town to compel the removal, alteration, or relocation of such structure.
That's not what we're dealing with.
We're dealing with B. This is a non-conforming use.
But that's a non-conforming structure for ten years. That wouldn't have applied.
Okay, but the use is the issue.
That applies when someone's trying to knock it down or, um, otherwise. It's definitely thirteen B is what we're looking at for sure.
So, my understanding, when J K G owned it, which was Mar Oil, he used it for his oil company.
No, no, he couldn't.
He couldn't.
He couldn't do it. That's when I owned it. I owned the land when he purchased it. That's false.
Were you able to find, uh, the date there?
What's the D, Keith? Who, on the D, in two thousand and twelve, what's the name of the owner?
Uh, Moro Real D LLC. M O R Y L.
So, uh, the Mar Oil, what, what, I'll start with you guys. What, what's your understanding of the timeframe where they were reportedly using the property?
Of twenty-twelve.
So, on page six, I call out the changes in the zoning and also who owned it at what time. My understanding is between two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten. They bought it at property auction.
Who did?
Uh, more, uh, J K G, which is Germain. When he bought it, he bought half the building.
Yeah.
Just like Mr. Bartek said unwittingly. And then, the lot was then split back so that it was, almost a triangle was sent back so that the building would be on one continuous lot now in Rutland, and then it had the second lot in Hubbardston.
Okay.
And that happened in two thousand and eleven.
Well, did anybody use it between two thousand and eight and two thousand and eleven?
When did the, when did the bank take it over?
Twenty, well, then, it sounds like twenty, I don't know, maybe the bank took it over in oh eight, and it got sold in twenty-ten. Um, so, I'm trying to figure out what the oil, uh, you know, the reported use by the oil company, what, what the timeframe was of that. That may be a disputed fact, so we may have to get more on that, but, go ahead, sir.
Just again, he had to purchase that land from me before he could do anything.
The, the oil?
Germain, Joe Germain. He's the one I sold the land to, my wife and I.
Right, but then it got caught, some, there was some sort of car.
But the bank owned it, and, and when he purchased it, he did nothing. And when he did, it wasn't until two thousand and eleven, and then he sold it to two thousand and twelve and him, but he did nothing by the time I sold it to him in October of two thousand and eleven. Even from October two eleven to when he sold it, nothing was ever used in that garage from Mar Oil or from Joe Germain.
Well, but that's a disputed fact. I think they're representing that it was used. We don't have Mar Oil or somebody here to figure that out right now.
Yeah, I understand that. I have paperwork about that.
You just sold your half to him at that time. He had already owned the other half at auction.
So, I, so I didn't have to have them remove the building.
No, 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 I'm just trying to clarify something here.
And basically tear it down.
He bought his half at auction.
No, he purchased the whole piece of land. Okay, it was never finalized in the registry of deeds. According to my wife and I and whoever bought that building, we never owned it. But technically, we did because Mark Flynn, who's not the brightest bulb on the tree, never finalized it with the registry of deeds, okay? So, technically, my property line went right through that building, okay?
So, you did, you did a lot division, and then you sold it.
Correct.
Germain thought he was buying the whole thing.
And then found out that it wa, he.
He didn't.
He couldn't. If you look at page.
So, so, but he bought it at the auction?
Yes.
He bought it at the auction, thinking it was the whole thing.
Correct.
Meanwhile, you owned half of it.
Correct.
Because the lot never got doubled or.
I didn't know that. My wife didn't know that. Germain didn't know that.
But, all right, and then, then after, after this got figured out, the survey came out, said, I'm out.
Correct.
We got, we got a technical file.
Correct.
All right, and then, then he bought a chunk that was dis, the disputed chunk, that metal piece.
Correct.
That's when you sold him that. But he did own the other half, if you will, prior to you selling him the, your half, correct?
With stipulations?
At the auction, he bought it.
Yes, with stipulations.
No, I'm just saying at the auction, he bought it.
Oh, sure.
And when was that auction?
Well, it's.
Two thousand and ten.
It sounds like it was.
Well, because if he bought it two thousand and ten, had it surveyed, they said, wait a minute, this guy owns half that building. So, from two thousand and eight to ten, it was bank-owned, and then until two thousand and twelve, until he owned it, and it's still, nothing has happened with it.
It's on page eight, the map.
Page eight, you'll see the orange triangle is the lot of land that he's talking about.
Like I said, we didn't buy that property to be next to a business.
Do you have the documentation that you're claiming that has?
Uh, I, I have it all at my house. I just have a letter stating that when we sell it to him, the stipulation that there's going to be no commercial or storage or operation of business in our property.
Can we see that letter, please? Is it all right for the chair?
Yeah, just, uh, Tamika, you want to, could make a copy of this? We'll have to get a copy of this.
Just don't lie.
I mean, I don't know that this is really relevant. I mean, it's an important piece of information, I'm not wrong, but I, we got to go by the, by what's recorded, the deed.
Right.
That's, I have more papers at my house I can come up with.
Yeah. Someone's going to have to.
That's, well, you, you can find out what's recorded at the registry. I mean, maybe not this second.
No, no.
You can all thank Mark Flynn for this.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, you go ahead and take a look at it. Honestly, I mean, nothing personal. I, I don't, not that I don't believe you, but I hope you can understand that. We really just got to go by the registry of deeds, and I think that's what, that's pretty much.
Like it says, I'm just pissed off with all the lies.
All right, well, this is just, this, this doesn't show that the agreement was.
I know, I have that paper.
That just shows me that you, you asked for that agreement. So, that's irrelevant.
So, as a board, we in agreement, we just got to dig into the registry of deeds and As a board, we didn't agree, we just got to dig into the registry deeds and find out timelines and what's on this thing. What do you guys think?
I think we need to see the deed.
You need to see that before we got to do this?
I think we need to see if there were restrictions on the deed when it was sold, when it transferred.
At least as one thing. I mean, I think we need to look into that. I think it's, it may not be totally dispositive, but it would be evidence suggesting that there was a period of time where it wasn't being used. You know. I think the essence for me is when, you know, you look at the property timeline that the applicant submitted, you know, it's a matter of fact as to whether or not from 98, you know, through 2012, there wasn't ongoing commercial use. I mean, that's.
No, there wasn't.
Listen, sir, please, you know, we can't have people, you know, you definitely can talk again when your time, when you're called, but I'm just trying to state for myself and for the record what I think the issues are. And I don't know that we can know it yet, but it sounds to me like, you know, do we have proof or don't we have proof that a commercial use was continuous? I don't have the answer to that right now. There's something about Mar Oil here that I don't fully understand, but it sounds like if they were using this property in this timeframe, you know, maybe it continued, but it's. You know. There's also what Precision Fence has been doing. I mean, obviously the neighbors feel like that was, there was no commercial use going on there. I am not sure that's really actually a fact. I mean, I drive by it, it, you know.
I will just say.
Is it been used for storage or not? I mean, is that true? You would say that you have been continuously using.
Up until September, when this purchase started going through, we were there three times a week loading up, getting our stuff out of there. Just so everybody knows, okay? The guy stores stuff in there for two years and never goes in there. That's still storing materials. It's not, the use is not. I mean, you know, it's his business. He can, you know, if he doesn't use the building very often, one or two years, you know, I mean, it's, and quite honestly, over the last couple of years with COVID, I mean, let's face it. I get some property, I haven't really been in on that much either, so.
I mean, another concern that I have is that we've heard a lot from the neighbors about not wanting to live next to a business, ISOs and things of that nature. When I look at the application at least, I would say that there's going to be significant improvements made to that property. It won't be an ISO. You know, the whole issue about a continuing nonconforming use is still not resolved in my mind. In terms of that as a concern, to meet the standard for a special permit, I think it would meet that standard and actually be a benefit to that neighborhood. But I don't live there, you know, I just drive by it. I mean, to me, it looks like that whole side of the hill will fall down if somebody isn't taking care of it. I don't know how anybody's going to sell it for any use, you know, and if Precision Fence stops using it, then it's just going to, you know, I think it's going to get worse for that neighborhood. But we don't get to that unless the nonconforming use is shown to be continuous. At least that's what I think. So there's, you know, that's the threshold issue. Then you move into, you know, whether the special permit standards are met. So, you know, I don't know if that gets us anywhere, but that's the way I'm seeing it right now.
Thanks, Art. Jacob, you had something?
I was going to make the point that Art just made that I really don't understand why neighbors wouldn't want a quiet business in there to make the building look nice. I mean, they've indicated that there's stuff growing in the gutters or whatnot. And if it were me, I would want, I would want these folks in there to take care of the property. And it seems like a perfect quiet business, but I guess that's not what we're here to discuss.
Well, I think to a point, it is, it is a matter of fact that, you know, detrimental to the neighborhood. And that is part of what.
Oh, this business is not.
This business in no way, shape, or form.
Just the opposite.
I mean, you could have a lot, lot worse businesses in that building. So I, you know, I don't know what you're looking for there. If you're just trying to get someone to tear the building down, if that's your end game. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, no one's going to have to tear it down. They're not going to tear it down.
No.
Listen, this is just my comment, okay? I'm not telling you what I'm, what I'm doing or whatever. I'm just telling you to think about it through and through that the ISO will just stay there or, you know, I don't know. I mean, that, you know, if we vote this down, which may happen, the ISO just stays there and he owns it and it just, it stays like that forever or as long as he wants. I mean, no one can make the guy take the trees out of his gutter. And then a war against that, I mean, think about it for a minute.
I've never said to, but if it's being used, don't you think it would be cleaned and taken?
Excuse me. If you can't control yourself, next time I'm kicking you out of here because I'm sick of it. Your condescending attitude sucks, all right? And I'm sick of you. I'm sick of it. You keep spitting up and you can't shut up. Now just go, thank you. Good God. Jesus Christ.
All right, so at this point, I'm going to ask, how do we go about getting that deed to see if there are any, what do you call, restrictions on the?
Takes 10 minutes.
Yeah, it takes 10 minutes, although you probably want to get it printed off.
Yeah, we need to find out what's on that.
Let me, so I mean, who?
Yeah. You want to take a recess and do that right now? Or what do you want to do? Is that something we can do right now?
I can do it at my office and print it all out for you.
Yeah. I don't think we can do it sitting here now.
Vice Chair.
One second. Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
We have access to a printer in my office, which is two minutes from here. As a safety from having to go home to yours.
Well, if I might just, it sounds like it could be a tricky search.
It's kind of like a title, a little bit of a title search.
Yeah, I wouldn't try to do it just.
Let's take some time, let's do that. Is that something you guys can do?
Yeah, I mean, we would need to, we would need to continue this.
All right, so we're going to have to continue this probably, all right?
And.
All right, so there are still some questions out there.
One second, man. This gentleman was first. Say your name for the record and your address, please.
Robert Hite, 87 Columbia Place, actually, near the groves. And I've seen a lot of the plans, I've seen the building. You know, being a neighbor, they plan to clean up the place a lot, do a lot of things to make it the curb appeal. Really, to the Niblet, to get the shrubs out of the gutters.
Are you a neighbor, are you a neighbor in this neighborhood?
I live next to Parker and.
You live next to him?
Not in this.
But not in the property yet.
Nope, so I've actually helped clean up some of the property too for Precision Fence. And, you know, coming from seeing, you hear auto body shop, you think of these mighty keynes, Jeffrey lubes, you know, loud impact guns. I've seen Parker and Cherry's shop. It's clean, organized. He even mops his cement floor. That's how detailed and meticulous he is. You go up front, there's no parts around, and there's old classic cars, you know, they're hand-wrenching them. There's a couple out in the park right now, they're gorgeous cars. I'm not really into the classic cars, but seeing those, and to drive one today, I may buy one. But I think that it'd be, you know, a great business for the town, you know, bringing in outsiders, you know, taxes, it would definitely help out. And it's just all around it, I think it'd be great. Their ideas, what they plan on doing, it's great for the neighborhood, great for the town. You know, instead of looking at a building that's apparently overgrown. So I'm in support for it.
All right, thank you very much.
I just, I just want to put this into some kind of a perspective. I don't know if you, any of you have driven down River Road lately. But I'm getting ready to go to the GPW and the Select Board to see if they're going to take out a permit to have the first island ferry to cross River Road because we've had to let the darn beavers, and they are eroding the side of the road on two sides going into the campground. And I think there's going to be a ferry that's going to have to drive our cars over that. So yes, you know what? Let's keep this all in perspective and know that we all want to live together and get along. That's all. That's all I, and the beavers too. We have to live with the beavers.
We've got to live with them too. Yeah, that might be better than some of the neighbors.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. Your name, please, and address.
See what I got to live with.
You've got a good perspective. You're a lucky man. You're a lucky man.
You're a smart man.
I don't get that off him.
One might contest that. Look, my name's Rich Crompton and I live at 111 River Road, which is just down the street from where this building is that they were, they're, you guys are talking about. I would think that the town would welcome a business that he wants to put in there. I've seen, I used to work for a company that delivered auto parts to this gentleman down in Holden. And he works on cars and sometimes trucks that probably not too many of us in this, in this room could even afford to purchase.
Wow, now we.
Because they're specialties. They're specialties. He doesn't park them outside. He parks them inside because if they get wet, something, something goes wrong with them. Everything is parked inside and you can eat off the floor in his garage. The first time I went in there, I says, holy smokes.
Okay, thank you.
This is unbelievable.
All right, so you're in support then?
I support his business going in that, that building.
Great, thank you very much.
Let me say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
All right, guys, I want to let you know that, you know, the town has shown support for this project. However, we are governed by bylaws which say there are rules we have to follow. And that's what the ultimate board, regardless of the emotion, saying this is a great business, we think this is going to bring up the neighborhood. It has to fit within the rules of the town bylaws that were set. And that's what governs this board and this board's decision. It's not based on emotion, you know, as much as we'd like to, which is why right now we've got to look into the deed. When Moro bought it, to be honest with you, he bought it, I feel he bought it with the intention of using it commercially. There was a little blip in time there, which I would, I would overlook in the sense that the intent was there and then they found that there was a reason why he couldn't do it right away, but then as soon as things were set. But the holdup would be that if it was sold, if he did sell it, these people did sell it to him with the agreement that, and it's deeded, that it is not to be used commercially. At that time, that would have been an abandonment of the use and it would not be available to do. If that is not recorded in the deed, I don't see that as being an issue, okay? And that's what we're going to find out when the chair decides to recess this meeting. We will do some research and then reschedule.
Yeah, there's Carol Benoit, yeah. Okay. Carol Burnett, Benoit, I'm sorry, Carol Benoit. You can address the meeting, please. Carol, can you hear us?
Sorry, unmute myself. I'm Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road. I know that people, a couple of people I've heard say the benefit to Rutland. I just want to remind people that may not remember is that Rutland has no commercial tax base or tax rate, so any commercial zones or any businesses are all taxed residential. So just a point of clarification, thanks.
Thank you, Carol. All right, sir.
Yes, the process, please. So when you explore the deed and you make a determination, how do we become notified? Is there another meeting?
Okay, yeah, so we're going to have another, we're going to, there'll be a postponement. There's going to be a continuance of this meeting to another night, okay? We're going to make that, set that time tonight before we leave here tonight. And then, then that, you know, this hearing will continue at that time.
Would we receive another letter or?
No, you don't receive another letter. You'll just hear this here or you can go on the town website and the agendas are posted.
But once they decide the time tonight, the date and time, we'll post the agenda on the website and maybe we just meet back here again.
Thank you.
Just so people know, I'm not, I'm looking at the registry of deeds on my phone. I'm not texting or something.
All right, so.
All right, so I think at this time, we've heard enough from the public, we're going to close that section. Personally, one second, personally, you know, again, business is always good to have in towns. This seems like a really clean-cut business, one that any town would be proud to have, okay? But at the end of the day, we do have to make sure something's not on this deed. We have to make sure that these uses, you know, it's a lot of the timeframe of things. So those things there, we know the concerns there, we've all talked about that. I'm not going to beat that. Personally, myself, I'm still kind of hung up that 13A matters in this and allows this building to potentially remain as a commercial use property because for 10 years, it's been there. And I know you said it's, you know, it just refers to the structure, Jacob, but personally, I mean, if it refers to the structure, how can it not refer to the use of the structure? I mean, if you're going to allow a garage or an office building to remain, I mean, what, you're not going to, people aren't going to live in an office building or a garage as residential. It's going to be used as a garage or an office building. So that use, to me, it would matter that that's another viable, you know, quite honestly, I think that's kind of a done deal. The thing's been there for over 10 years and.
I think 13A has to do with a violation. And commencement of the violation may not be subject to any enforcement action by the town to compel the removal, alteration, or relocation of the structure.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's.
We're not compelling to do anything to it.
Yeah, we're, so it doesn't apply to our scenario.
Well, it says, may not be subject of any enforcement action by the town.
Oh, but we have to give them a special permit so they can open their.
We're not enforcing it, any on that.
Okay.
They're asking us to help them out.
All right.
Who owns the property right now?
I do.
Guys, once, guys, we're all done with the public, I closed that section, I'm sorry, okay? Thank you very much for.
So I make a motion to, to.
Well, yeah, let's.
Pick a date, yeah.
June 1st. I am not in town. I don't think I'm in town June 1st. No, I'm not in town June 1st.
The only other option is if the board is open to doing it on the Thursday evening. That would be the other option we have.
Didn't matter to me.
Thursday night, Rick, you available on Thursday nights?
Yeah.
So we could either do the 19th or the 21st.
We got one the 8th.
I could do the 19th, right? Yeah. We got the cell tower the 18th, we do this the 19th? Double down?
That's on you guys, I'm not doing the cell tower.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The 19th?
Next Thursday, 19th. That's an option or the following Thursday. I'd have to find a room first, I can't guarantee it was this one, but as far as I know.
It's not a big crowd.
There is no basic book. It's just the next couple of weeks.
So, so if you're, is this board good with the 19th of May? Next Thursday, a week from tomorrow? Can this board do that at 6:00?
I can.
Rick, you good? Paul, you good?
Yeah, sure, Chris.
I have my calendar, I'm going to have to say yes, but.
Okay, all right. To the applicant, can you, can you be available if we continue this on the 19th? Can you guys come back and make it for that meeting?
Sure.
Do you need anything from us?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we're just, Jacob and Arthur are going to do the research.
Oh, I was just going to say, there's a form that I have to have you sign. Okay, I'll just email it to you, you can sign it and send it back to me. It just says we're continuing the hearing. Okay, that's perfect.
Yeah, we just need this formal signature from you to allow us to continue.
Sure. So we have a motion to continue this meeting, this hearing until May 19th at 6:00 P.M.
Second?
Second.
How do you got the second? Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. The guy, okay. Any opposed? All right, so the motion carries. This hearing will be continued till next Thursday at 6:00 P.M.?
Yep, it'll be in the library. I just don't know if it'll specifically be this room, but if you check the agenda, I'll know by then and I'll have it on there for you. Okay?
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, old business, new business. Reminder about the continued cell tower meeting is next...
Where's the old meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Attorney Sosa indicated he's gonna be on Zoom, just in FYI.
Okay.
Attorney Sosa just indicated he's gonna be on Zoom.
Did he send any of the documents we asked?
He said he's gonna get it to me by tomorrow.
Okay.
So then I'll get it out to everybody and I'll also post it on the website.
Yeah, and those were the fall, the winter pictures, pictures from December and...
The pictures are already up there.
The balloon test from the, from the winter is up there. It's just the...
These are gonna be the plot that you guys had asked for at the different heights.
Yeah.
And there's one other thing, I can't remember off the top of my head, but he was also...
You say they're already updated, they're on the town website?
They're on the website.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't know, because I made an update to the agenda today, so I don't know if that's the most recent one. But Rick had asked if we could please talk about board reorganization tonight.
Yep, we're gonna do that too.
Oh, okay, I just didn't know if that was on...
No, no, it's not on this one, but, yeah, the site bridge was on the other day, but that's fine. Yep, all right, so that's pretty much it for the cell tower thing, right? Yep, okay. Any other correspondence, mail or anything like that?
I guess, just a heads up, coming down the pike at some point, is that the Dunkin' Donuts expansion for the house that was purchased to the right of Dunkin' Donuts is going to be coming back to the ZBAA for site plan review, simply because of the date at which it was originally reviewed, I think it was back in like the late 90s, it was done by the ZBAA. So in this case, the ZBAA has to do it again. I've provided the applicant with what he needs, but I have not received anything back yet. So we're not at that point, but just so you know, it's gonna be coming at some point.
That was a lot, I remember that one, Chris.
That was a lot.
Shut down, I see it's shut down.
Yeah, too bad.
Yeah, they're renovating it right now. It's gonna be closed for like six to seven weeks for renovation, but they also purchased at the town auction, the building next door.
That's, it sold at auction?
Correct.
I knew that guy.
Yes, yes, so that's part of it. And as I understand it, the plans have been submitted to the planning office, but nothing's been received for our side yet, but just so that you know, it's coming.
What do they want to do, do you know?
It has to do with expanding it, but I don't know specifically if it's the building, the parking lot,
I heard at one point they wanted to reconfigure the ingress and egress with something coming around with that old house. Probably.
Yes.
All right, they're gonna tear the house down, they want to raise it, okay. Probably make two separate in and outsides of it, which would be...
Well, maybe they'll relieve the...
Yeah, that gets pretty tight and pretty dicey.
It's kinda like a game of chicken when you're pulling out.
Oh, it's amazing.
Can we do the minutes yet? Can we do the minutes?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we did those first.
All right, all right, all right.
Yeah, you voted on those, you said, you said yea.
All right, so this is the first meeting after the town meeting and the town election, so tonight, I am proposing that we vote for the new chair. So my, my thought on it is that we should, we should vote for a chair and for vice chair. I'd like to do it by consensus and then formally vote on it. So, by seniority, Chris, you know, has been the vice chair. I think he would be the logical choice to be the new chair. And by seniority, Bob would be the new vice chair. So I don't know how you, how you people feel about it. I am, you know, more or less, you know, almost done, except that I'm still on because of the cell, cell tower issue. So do you, do you want to have a quick discussion along those lines?
Seems reasonable to me.
I agree with it as long as they're willing.
Yeah, I have no problems with it. You want to be vice?
Bob?
I don't know if I want to be vice chair.
Do you want to think about it?
What are the duties of the vice chair?
I want a meeting if somebody's not there. I'm not 100% comfortable with all these things, what we're talking about, you know? And, I mean, I'm not in a turny second. Try me, that's what I mean, Paul does a good job with that. I'd rather see Paul do it than try to do it myself and screw it up.
I mean, well, here's why, I have no problem doing it, Bob, but I feel that you could do it very, with, obviously, because we support 100%. I don't think it's an expertise type of thing. I think it's more of running the meeting and just going that way. Because we all have our own expertises. And I still, I really defer to you. I really think that you can do it. I think you'd be a good, good person. I would support you 100%.
Thank you, Stuart.
All right, now, by the way, I got a bridge.
Yeah, that was good, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so we need a motion then, I suppose? Make a motion, we vote for a new chairperson?
All right, so I have one motion, I have a second?
Second.
Jacob's second, all right, any discussion?
What's the motion for?
I vote, I vote, I nominate and vote for Chris.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor for, for me to be the chairman.
You want to, you want to do what, do them separately? Chris, you do yours.
So, so there's a motion on the floor from, from Paul for, for me to be the chairman of the ZBAA.
I'll second.
Jake seconded already.
Jake seconded already?
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, it's unanimous. All right, so let's talk about the vice.
I'd like to make a motion that Bob Paulson be the vice, vice chair of the ZBAA.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Jacob seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor of Bob Paulson being the vice chairman of the ZBAA? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None, unanimous? Bob Paulson's the vice and... Good night, buddy. They say tomorrow night I'm retiring.
Like you know it.
All right, all right, and Rick, you know, words worth, it's been a pleasure. I know this is not your last meeting, but really want to thank you for everything you've done over all the years. I've learned a lot working from you. You know, you're, you're a good man, number one. It's been a pleasure to work with you, just as the person you are. But also I learned a lot from you, and it's been a lot of fun, I'm gonna miss you.
Well, I really appreciate that, Chris. I feel the same way. You know, it's been a great board, you've mentioned that many times, and it's really been a pleasure. It's bittersweet leaving, but I know that the board is in great hands, so I feel good about that. I know, I know you guys are gonna be great.
And just one last ask, are you sure you don't want to remain as an alternate? Honestly?
I'm not gonna close the door on that, but why don't, why don't you see how many people you can get?
I have one gentleman who was willing to come on the board. He, and just, you know, he's got construction experience, which I think would be good to have someone else like me. Honestly, sometimes I don't feel comfortable being, always being the only one and the only voice of it. And, you know, we've had multiple lawyers, and we still have two lawyers, and then we get two other guys in business, you know, and one in construction. I just feel, a lot of things are construction-wise. And if I wasn't here in this construction thing, I felt like I had to get here. So it'd just be nice to have, no, I definitely don't have to be here, it's not the other fight. But no, seriously, just to have that other type of person, I think we've got a good board. And I've got a couple other people that I've reached out to, which would come from a different, kinda more of a, just a town perspective. People, you know, that just appreciate the town, they're not lawyers, but, you know, they just kinda bring that perspective as well, so. I haven't said definitely with them, the other one gentleman's definitely a go. So if, but I just wanted to talk to you, Rick, first off, and give you that, you know, offer, if that's something you might want to do.
Sure, yeah, well, I, I'd like to see if we can fill, fill all the positions, you know? And I'll, I'll be in the background.
Must light off into the sunset.
Yeah, a little bit.
All right.
All right, well...
Any other business, anything else to discuss here? All set?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, you go second, Bob's second. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No nays? Good night.